I said, Chief, not here. I hadn't heard him. Now I'm.
Go ahead, Doctor.
Then what?
I said, I talked to him earlier recently.
Oh, really? Okay.
Because I had something I need to talk to him.
Okay. Let me remind you right quick. You've got some stuff on here we need to talk about. The warrant tax twenty twenty-five rolled forward resolution. And Shelley's gonna talk to us about that.
Okay, this will be on Monday night for the, this is to set the actual warrant tax that we do every year. But we're doing the roll forward process and I advertised in the Spring Hill paper industry four times twice like we were supposed to. And I have to do it by two resolutions. And the first one is setting the millage rate. And then the second one is the roll forward of the millage rate. And what it is, is you know, every four years they reassess the property values and whatnot. And we didn't roll forward last year. So Ms. Denise sent me this early this time. And it's gonna gain the city about twelve thousand dollars if we roll forward. So it's, uh, the millage rate is seven point two-two and the adjusted livy would raise it to the seven point seven oh. And we're allowed to do this, I think, once every four years when they reassess the property. So we'll have a public hearing before the meeting. Kinda like we did at the budget process. We'll do the public hearing and then we'll close out of it and go into the regular meeting.
All right. That'll be on Monday night. Okay, the next item is, uh, burning ordinances. I, I'm real confused about all this mess. Uh, I, I get, it seem like they contradict, that all contradicts each other. But let me tell y'all, let me go over this with y'all to see what y'all think about it.
I've gotten copies of the others on there.
Okay, first of all, I want to go over the ordinance as we have it now. The ordinance is on the books now. We have a burn ordinance on the books now. And I'm gonna read this to you. One was in nineteen ninety-nine and one was in nineteen eighty-four. But there, one of them is on open burning, one of them is on just burning. Okay, "It shall be unlawful for any person to start or set any fire to any grass, leaves, brush, or debris, unless the fire is protected by a proper furnace or incinerator and the municipal fire department is given prior written notice of the intent to burn, together with a street address and other description of the property where the burning is to occur and indicating when the burning is to occur." Okay, that's one. In other words, it's saying, no, period, no, you can't burn nothing anytime unless it's in a furnace or an incinerator. Okay? Uh, the second one, which is in nineteen eighty. No, it's on another, it's on burning, just burning here. "No person shall burn or permit to be burned on premises occupied by him, garbage, refuse, debris, leaves, limbs, or waste of matter of any kind in any place in the city, except that that wood may be burned in a stove or a fireplace." So the ordinance that we've got on books now says, no burning, period, anytime, anywhere. Period. That's all that's ever been put on the books is for ordinances. Okay? And then the ordinance, um, Dr. Wright's, uh, he, he brought us these now. Pass the, pass this down. I think he, he ran these copies off, but he pinned off enough everybody. There you go.
Um, so you don't need one, Dr. Wright?
Well, I'll take one.
Mike, you got the extra one?
I don't know yet. Do you have one? Okay, um, here's what he's done. He's quoted, just like, uh, and we'll get to Derrick's in a minute, the one Derrick wants us to talk. Uh, both of them have quoted the state Louisiana General Rule on open burning that's permitted. Uh, and talks about the second page, if y'all go to the second page. It, it tells you, open burning is prohibited. But then it has exceptions. And then it says when burning is allowed. Burning is permitted only under these certain other conditions. And that statutory exceptions are, leaves, grass, twigs, vines may be burned by private property owners in parishes with population under three hundred thousand. Or trees and brush may be burned in parishes under ninety thousand population outside city limits and only if smoke does not affect nearby towns. Or wildfires are okay in St. James Parish. Agricultural byproducts can be burned in fields. Cotton gin waste, timber stand management, and pasture marshland can be burned for agricultural purposes. Additional exceptions are campfires, cooking fires, ceremonial fires, outdoor burning for land clearing. Okay, in other words, that's just saying you can burn the fire out of everything, looks like to me. Uh, I, 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 that contradicts the one we've got, uh, where you can't burn nothing anytime. But is that right, Dr. Wright? I mean, I do, I get it, it looks pretty black and white.
Yeah, you're, you're certainly on the right track, sir. So the way I understand it, the lawyer can help me with this and I, I can look up the legal terms. The state has a certain requirement that puts some restrictions on it. And the city, Spring Hill, has made it even stricter, which is there's a term that I can look that up if we need, the lawyer. But we've made it, we, the city has made it stricter, so there's not burning allowed in the city. Up one.
But the state says up kind of.
But you've made it stricter. I'd have to go back and look through all this, but the city has made it stricter.
Go to this, your, your stuff.
Well, I didn't, actually, I didn't break this off, the second page, I don't think. But maybe, okay. My, my, my goal, let me just make one comment. My goal is not necessarily to stop all burning. Because that's what the city needs. My goal is just to make it safe. My house survived wildfire and right now we have another wildfire going in my house in Colorado. And I'm part of COCO, I'm part of the board of directors for Grand County Wildfire Council, which is just fire after fire after fire. And this, this town is just not set up to a lot of burning right now. Your fire department can't handle it. The houses are close together. The tree crowns are too close together. I just don't want to see a fire in this town campaign. If I live through it. That's my bottom concern.
All right. Okay, and, and then Derrick, has this ordinance here, which is contradictory too. Because it says, uh, let's see. I don't think y'all, y'all have a copy of that. Okay, it's saying, burning is prohibited. That's how they start off, burning is prohibited. Then it says, except as expressly permitted by the state or local ordinance. All burning of waste, debris, or material is prohibited within Spring Hill Corporation limits. No burning of any kind should take place in the front yard of a residence or commercial property. That tells me you can burn in the backyard, don't burn in the front yard. And then it says, open burning may be permitted only in the courts with the following exceptions. A recreational fire in the rear yard is provided they are contained and contingent at all times, located at least fifteen feet from structures or property lines, not used for burning waste or creating smoke nuisances. Vegetative debris burning from storm damage and landscape maintenance as long as it's only if approved by the Spring Hill Fire Department and conducted under favorable weather and air quality conditions. Uh, firefighter training exercises. Enforcement shall be administered by the code enforcement officers in coordination with the Spring Hill Fire Department. I wonder if the Spring Hill Fire Department's on board with the other side.
I may. I would like to know, Jack, was there about the Spring Hill Fire Department?
Yeah.
Two years ago, before you became my new mayor. Uh, they did do those exercises. And something happened, uh, with the environment protection agency, am I right about it, Mike? So they cut out that, they don't do that anymore. Because it used to be where they would do these houses, these laminated houses. But they, they zeroed everything out to do the EPA because somebody did that on, uh, one of the streets over there.
Right.
And, uh, it was just totally alleviated.
And the fire department used to be a part of the city, but it's not anymore. It's, uh, parish.
It's a fire district.
Still, it's a fire district. So we're not, we're not associated with the fire department anymore. So, uh.
What this ordinance that I'm taking, of course, is always something, it's, it's a draft, it's something in work. I mean, it's a fluid document, it can change. And in cross-reference, the, uh, LA ordinances are the LA laws. Uh, and it also went back to the Spring Hill ordinance, yes. Uh, we have a problem though. This, our ordinance says, there shall be no burning. And the problem being there is that the enforcement of that is very, very lax.
That's fine, we, we.
And to give you an example of, of what the problem is, I go by it every day. He goes by when he's in town every day. But on Hill Street, we have a house there that they pile every piece of junk and everything else there. And they'll sit out there to have a fire.
They do that all.
And then they got their barbecue grill powered, they throw in their trash and it's burning it in the trash can and the barbecue grill. So therein lies the problem. We don't enforce what we put in place. Now, is that to say that it's wrong to offer burning twice a year? No. In spring and in the fall, when the weather conditions are right and it's not dry. Now, this, the summer and winter, too. I think that we need to come up with something. Uh, interesting that I got a message from another council member that's saying that in no way will I change anything in burning because we don't have the dumpsters, so people can dump their dump.
No, we do.
Well, don't we do the burning during the quarter?
We, no, we used to do it, we did spring cleanup. And we stopped the spring cleanup.
But we're going once a quarter to dump.
Yeah, we got.
We said that people could burn during.
That week.
Right. If the, and there, it lies that.
That's what we're doing.
Hot rock, which would be the weather conditions. For example, if I burned back behind my house, if I would burn this last time, there is a, they cut all those trees down there and there's all that dried, uh, dead stuff there. Imagine what would happen? I mean, it would be gone in minutes. And so we've gotten to start enforcing it. And I know that's not your fault, that goes back on the code enforcement. I put this together so that we'd have something to start, kinda look at and work at. Are we gonna allow them to burn? Yeah, we're gonna do it.
That's why I need to know what, what y'all want to do. What's your direction you want to go?
I'm not opposed to twice a year burning, fall and spring, when the weather conditions are right, it's wet, it's damp, and you have all the leaves and the vegetation. But unfortunately, what's happening is, and that goes back into the EPA, which she talked about with the, with the houses. Uh, if they're burning everything, plastics, whatever they find.
Can I make a request for this order to y'all redoing it? If you're gonna allow them to burn, put something in there, some tea, so they do not burn in the ditches with culverts.
And I, I agree with that.
Lots of, because people write that there's, their culverts won't drain. You go out there and there's a pile of leaves in them, they're trash.
But I, I've known this man since, well, I knew him before he actually came here because we'd met and had lunch and talked. Uh, but I did put a lot at stake in what he has to say about the, the, the loss, you know, the easy loss. And it wouldn't take much, we have a lot of old wooden structures in this town.
I agree, so.
So I think.
You want to do or not?
I, I want to allow burning under certain conditions. But, and which we can do. But we need to make sure we control that. Right now, it says that we don't burn, we're not supposed to. But I go downstairs, find smoke everywhere, I think you.
Yeah, about two weeks, they, they finally tore that old blue house down right from me. Brett and I had been somewhere, we're driving down the road and I'm in there. Old neighborhood's on fire. Well, old Kyle tore that house down and he went back there with a backhoe and dug a hole and pushed all that stuff in that hole and said, don't buy it. In that backyard.
Yeah.
But like my backyard, I mean, I have the alleyway. So if I wanna burn, I got pecan tree and that pecan tree shits every day, twelve, once a year. I got a stack of pecan leaves back there right now in that alleyway that time. But I normally burn them like once a year. But I'm not around anybody. He's way away from everybody, he's in that alleyway.
So, man, I'd rather have one more. And you got, the state of Louisiana, a lot of their law is based on the quality of the air. But just also keep in mind that you think you want to burn when there's no wind, you want a small wind. Because otherwise, the, the smoke just stagnates and then any older person has COPD or any young person has asthma, including your five, the secretary of fire department who has a disability or other debts. They will suffer with the burning. You may end up having them, them end up in the yard or dead. I'm just pointing out that.
And, and as far as this going back to the fire department, you and I, we're not experts on, I've got common sense, you've got common sense. We know that we're not gonna burn when it's dry, so there's, there's, there's a bone. But I do think that it gives us an extra edge if we say, okay, yeah, we checked with fire chief to make sure that this is, this is safe and we can do it at this time. I just think that, uh, we need to cover ourselves. I gave this to you so that I can get a chance to look at it and him to, to put his opinions in there. And I'd like to hear those.
I gave him his copy this thing.
Oh, okay, so he had a chance to.
Well, I mean, I've got to break with it, I read through it. What I would say first of all is just from a structural standpoint, whatever y'all do decide to do with, of y'all, whatever you decide to do with this new incoming ordinance, we need to get rid of these old two and, and just make one new solid ordinance for clarity purposes from that. But you certainly are allowed, and this, Miss Shelley was just asking me about this. You, you can further, uh, limit fires. Just because they also said one thing doesn't mean we can't go further as a city of Spring Hill. That was anybody's concern, which I think is what, Dr. Wright, is what you're talking about. Right. Uh, so you are, you can place these limits. And, and I think I agree with my other question really, is just what are you trying to accomplish and how do you wanna go about it? Um, but I'll tell you this, just reading through this here, um, I don't know that this is going to fix your problem. No burning of any kind shall take place in the front yard. And then you have exceptions. Well, I, I think what this is gonna mean is everybody just moves it to the backyard and calls it a, a campfire of some sort. And without some sort of either notice, requirement, or registration requirement or something, you're just gonna end up with a bunch of backyard fires instead of front yard fires.
And that's why we wanted to.
Right. I, I mean, that would be my recommendation. Like, and I see in the, I believe this is the ninety-nine proposal, uh, given prior written notice of the intent to burn, uh, to the municipal fire department. I understand that that may create some issues now since it is, we're no longer having a city fire department. Uh, but coming up with some sort of registration notice requirement and approval process, I think would probably answer your questions a lot better. And then instead of carving out specific exceptions that allow people to necessarily interpret when and where and how, if you just went through an approval process, uh, that y'all would come up with a structure however y'all decided y'all wanted to structure it, then you could allow burning safely through the approval board. And people could come and they could let you know when they're gonna have a, a campfire in their backyard, certify that the dump would be there, which wasn't concerned in one of these. Or they could tell you that they wanted to burn some debris and you could decide whether or not they were entitled to do that. That would be my recommendation.
The law, the law, you would have, it's, that's not, I don't consider that a really so much of the environment. That's gonna.
Well, park is a little different because it's, it's a controlled park. Uh, but burning leaves and stuff like that, that is one thing. Had, you know, your, your teenager set up a campfire in the back, maybe that needs some approval and at least some checks there to say if you're gonna do it, we're gonna do it this way. That would be my recommendation, uh, just reading this. One would be, whatever we do, whatever y'all decide to do with this one, we need to repeal these other two so that there's no longer any confusion. We'll go under one, uh, burn ordinance, period. And then I would just think, long hard enough, front yard versus backyard. I don't know that that's the language that accomplishes a whole lot.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we, we probably need to look at that in a sense of, uh, how do I put it, uh, not burning trash, that's what's, I guess, you know.
Well, could you just say, okay, if we wanted to do two times a year instead of only spring and fall, and it would say leaves and limbs only? What, what's the reason for allowing burning to start with?
Well.
Yard to burn.
Yard to burn is a big problem. But what it's turned into, when it's an open burning day, is it's turned into, I'm gonna burn everything I can find, which is trash, uh, plastic, tires, even.
Well, the rea- reason I ask that is because they bring all that, when we have our cleanups, they bring brush, they bring trash, they bring tire. They bring everything down into the dumpsters.
And what we need.
And we dispose of it whichever way we need to.
So this brings out a bigger problem, Mike, which now we need to say these dumpsters are not for, for yard waste. Get rid of, there are more other types of waste that we need to list.
See, we need to, that's why I'm going, we need to specify what we're doing. Because right now, we accept everything legal that we can accept. We got a place, we put brush and limbs and that type of stuff. And everything else that we can, we put in the dumpsters. And there's even, I noticed today, there was some brush thrown in the dumpsters, so.
Yeah, and, and.
Well, and my point is, if you're gonna take everything while burning, period. You know, we're gonna take it all down there.
Right, and, and it costs us money to get rid of that, that. I mean, I, I know I fill the dumpster with tree stuff and it cost me two hundred dollars. And I'm not, you know, I, so I think that the ci- and the city's paying for that. It's, it's expensive. And so I think that we, we, and this is to get us thinking. Dr. Wright, not be thinking, this is to get us all thinking on that direction. If you look at our ordinances, we have great ordinances, but we need to update a lot of them. And I think we need to go back to the drawing board on this a little bit and make some changes. I'd like to work with Chance and see if we can get this one together or something that's.
Just try, try to make it, you know, work on some more when I'm back. But try, try and get with, uh, Dr. Wright and, and like you said, the city.
Well, Chance is gonna be the final, you know.
I need to break wheel in on this because he's the one that's doing the enforcement.
And, and I, Chance, I, I know that, uh, we, this, this ordinance, George, that it's, that there's a, uh, a three second fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. But I know that a lot of our ordinances are that they have to end up going to the court and then the judge does the, sets that amount. And I don't know if there's a reason why we do that. Is that because the court gets the funding off of it? It's, I know there's a lot of little, little things in there that, that are in play.
So if most of, most of your ordinances, most of your criminal liability statute, misdemeanor, stuff like that, they don't have set numbers, so it's not set at two fifty. Instead, it says things like up to two hundred and fifty dollars. And what that allows the court to do is, is to be able to determine, is this a first time offender? Maybe they deserve a fifty dollar fine plus cause first, since this is somebody that's done it three or four times. It just allows the court to weigh in on specific facts of the individual and the violation as opposed to just having a blanket rule. Um, is, that's, that's the only difference, it's up to scenario. Now, as far as like how costs are split up and stuff like that, that differs from court to court, things of that nature. But most of your ordinances are going to either require, if they choose to fight and require court appearances, I mean, there's no other way to, to ultimately enforce an ordinance unless somebody's gonna come to court and get a order from your city judge.
Right.
So, I didn't specifically look at how it was worded, fines up to two fifty. So, yeah, it still gives the court wiggle room, they'll have to go in and pay it. Um, and, and if you wanna set a minimum, I mean, there are different ways that we can work with that. If you wanna make it to where it's payable outside of court and stuff like that, we can, we can work.
Well, that would be directly coming to the city, not just going to the court. I'm just thinking how they, I'm trying to think, because the city puts a lot of money into court already.
So do you know how, where you were going with it? Do you know where, how, how are you gonna approach it now?
I think so.
Does the council want to, I guess I'm, I'm confused. If the council had to vote right now, allow burning or not allow burning, would you allow it? What would the vote be? That would be my question.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Because there's no reason to go through, uh, a large draft if the council's saying, no, we don't want burning at all.
It, it's, it's. But then if we make the exceptions, and, you know, what, like in this, in the spring and the fall when we have the cleanups.
Let me, let me interject something because we're in the office, you know, and we're the ones that take the phone calls. So, you know, people's got trees and leaves and stuff. And the garbage company will not take, and there's some of my neighbors, like where I live, have lots of trees. So you're talking about lots of leaves or lots of pine straw. And they will only allow two bags outside your garbage can for pickup. And if the household garbage is a lot, they're not gonna pick up them bags that's sitting outside the can. So then, you know, used to the residents of Webster Parish, we could go to the dump at Sirepta and you used to pick up for free, it didn't cost you anything. Now I think they charge like five dollars a bag if I'm not mistaken. So some of my neighbors have had forty or fifty bags sitting outside, you know, on the street on pickup day. So what are they supposed to do with this stuff?
To have any properties that, that we can utilize to, to put that in just yard, things and things. No, they don't have anything.
I have a question.
With all the brush. Treat like a soundbag, but it's a little bit, I gotta burn it. Yes, ma'am.
My question is, I've witnessed this, I've got phone calls myself in regards to burning in the district one. Uh, they'll call the fire department, right?
And have.
And have fire department come. And some of my constituents, like on oxygen, they're the ones that get really, uh, when they burn back there by Sherwood. And, you know, they'll call the fire department, uh, try to get the okay. You know, so all of that stuff needs to be, uh, clarified as well. Even though we know our fire department, you said it was the parish now?
It's a district, fire district.
They still call, and they burn a lot. Especially by Sherwood and, uh, y'all remember they signed the graveyard call off fire? But anyway.
Are you serious?
Yes. Yeah, got a fire. But. But, um, that needs to be just clarified as well because if it's the rule, it's a blanket rule for Spring Hill. And I will vote no burn, we'll be done with it.
Yeah.
That's me.
The only other option.
My neighbor burns off.
Well, you got some people that can burn every day.
Yeah.
Fire again with that.
But nothing's ever done until. And I think it comes down to, well, I think I've heard, well, unless they call us, we're not going to come out and do anything. Uh, but.
In this two week deal though, you could, I mean, the fire department would be notified and say, we are doing this this week of the cleanup in the spring and in the fall.
And then these.
Fire department would be alerted, this is the burning week.
Right, and then the people that have issues, uh, breathing and all, you know, we make sure that would be a notification out there too. But that's just an option, I'm not saying that's what we do.
So, so where are y'all leaning? How, how, how in the code, what's your?
Nobody. As long as it's time we have on the calendar.
What do you think about it?
I guess that we get to burn just that, the old windows. Because you have people that are, during some time, you have possession, you have the brush.
Uh, I, I think if we do it right and we communicate, I think that's something that, uh, is.
So we can burn during the spring clean, right? Is that the window you talk about?
Spring and fall. Every time we got, every time.
Every time we have cleanups.
When animals got the fall. Right, right. Every time we changed it to two.
That's why you said we just need one thing so it don't be all spread, okay? It's too much information.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I think Stacy, when she told me she wanted a beer today. I told her this is about the only thing we had to talk about. And she said, she texted you and told you how she thought about it, what she thought about it. So then, and what do you think about it?
Me?
You, yeah.
I'm, I'm in agreement, we have a problem. Uh, I think that, uh, we could, if we handled this correctly, we give some of the, the changes that Chance has, has recommended. And, uh, if we do this in a, a spring. And, uh, if we do this in a spring or a fall time, then we notify the fire department, notify. And the public to notify that this is gonna be burnt, so those people on oxygen and those people that have asthma and problems like that are, are aware. And would be able to make sure they're inside the home.
My, what do you think?
I'm doing.
I, I just.
Because regardless, th- they're gonna burn, they're gonna burn. There you. And we don't have, I don't think, a patrol officer to just go around looking for, to burn it all.
No, but, but I think that if we, we, uh, put a little enforcement, a little bite in it, uh, that, that's gonna stop real fast or get out. And I'm not trying to be ugly or mean, but I, like, again, I know a man that's on oxygen and, and he walks ten steps and he's down from ninety-six to eighty-five. And, you know, he'll kill, he would kill him, but I think if we can make sure we, we do it.
Maybe if you and Dr. Wright, uh, get together and redo one and let Chance look at it.
We'd be glad to.
Put it around that back road.
I'm happy to do that and, and, and I, I trust, like I said, I trust us with the whole part.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, he qualifies.
Make sure they don't do it in the ditches. Like, so it's gonna, we'll go for a sign, we'll back, do it in the ditches.
Okay, I think we, we can beat that one.
Well, it took it to get it to that point, you know what I mean? But I think we got it to where we, we know where we are.
So we would actually, Chance would have to repeal the other, the old business.
Do it, do it with those two old ones.
Yeah.
The council will have to repeal the ordinance.
Yeah, we have to.
That's how, I would recommend that, just because if you've got two competing ordinances already, you're talking about adding a third, it would just, it would make it so much confusion, yeah.
So will that be on the agenda to repeal our old?
Not, not on Monday.
Okay.
That's why we pay Chance a little bucks.
That's right.
Okay, the next item is, is Chance, uh, he's gonna update us, uh, on the splash pad. We're trying to go ahead and get the darn thing finished. But can we do that with a lot, with, uh, suit going on and whatever? I know we're not, we're not gonna talk about the suit, we're just gonna talk about what we need to get as far as finishing.
So, uh, one of the other concerns, I can't remember the exact one, was whether or not you could get it repaired. And I think that the repair of the splash pad is in sight. Um, I would say, the good news is, is I, I spoke to John French and he had an idea and I did some research and I think it may work out. With the repairs being under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't think we have to open it up to a public bid. So, public bid law actually went up from two fifty recently. And so we're, I, I think with the current estimate, we have, we're well under the public bid law. So the only requirement would be that we would receive up to three estimates as to how much the restoration and repairs and all that other stuff would cost. And then once we have those three, the council could act as to which direction they would wanna go. Um, what I would say is right now, there is a process going on where we're making sure that we get a clean lien, since there is a lawsuit going on. We filed the termination of the contract of, of the guy from legal, it was a law, it's very nice, I think was the name. Uh, so that process is being done, once we get a clean lien from the state, uh, to make sure that they don't want any of their money back, which shouldn't be any problem. That's all supposed to start taking place at the beginning of next week. And so I would say probably by September, we can start considering some, um, estimates and things like that. We gotta make sure we get up to three and then we can move forward with, or y'all can move forward selecting, uh, whichever one y'all want to repair and get the splash pad up and moving for next year.
At the September meeting, we could probably approve, the council could approve going ahead with, uh, I have the three.
Yeah, I would say September, uh, is, is, is probably going, I would say, comfortably, it could happen before October's meeting. You could make a decision in October at the latest as well.
Can we pick any of the three we wanna pick regardless of price, or does it gotta be the lowest?
I don't know that it necessarily has to be the lowest, I'll double check that just to make sure. Um, but, uh, the good news is we're going to get the public bid, so that removes any bond obligations and posting and things like that. So it's gonna save us a lot of paperwork, a lot of time.
I don't wanna get back in the same situation.
That's the problem, that's why we're having trouble, we had to take the lowest bid and it was way too high.
Right, I'll, I'll check into that to make sure and then, uh, we'll go back to like the estimates and stuff. Like I said, I think September is now, it's that chance we can make all the decisions in September, but I would say for October for sure. And that way you're looking at at least the splash pad being available for twenty-six. And, uh, and then see what law.
How, okay, we'll get somebody to do this, what do you think's a timeframe to get everything right pretty good?
I'd say, I'd say at least a couple ones, at least.
See, we've got the lumberjack festival coming up September, the second weekend in September.
October, I'm sorry.
That's what me to talk about, she's going.
Yeah, and I, I've talked to her about.
I've been right up here?
I, I don't know, I, I don't know what to do about that, I really don't.
I think moving back down here where it originally started, okay? The only problem with that is it's wet over there around the gazebo and it's wet right over here. Try to fix that whole area, it's still staying.
They used to use that.
My spray can, that's why. Spray gone crazy.
I walked back there, I, next thing I know, I was ankle deep.
Oh, it's terrible. And trying to keep them people out of there be impossible. And trying to keep them out from over younger is gonna be impossible too. That's why I called with him the other day, 'cause I saw her over there walking around at some lumberjack festival.
Yeah. I, I just don't.
She was under the pavilion, I said, oh, we hadn't even thought about this gonna have to move because we sure don't want nobody out there tearing nothing up or get hurt.
I'm wondering though, if we can fence it off better or something to keep people out.
I can put the orange fencing back up, tie it back up, no. What is that called? Is it gonna stay? Can't really take all the people out.
You can use under the pavilion, you can use that, you know, it's, it can be huge.
Get your hand and go under.
Well, now that's all gonna be fixed, Ronnie's got that, that deal fixed.
See, I'd rather not even be under any of that, all the new stuff yet.
Yes.
In my opinion.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do something, because God have the festival.
Can we do it in the park? Well, she normally, see, that same day, we have Jamboree.
Oh, that's right.
But they normally have, for the last couple of years, they have a car show in the parking lot.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right, and there've been a few vendors down in the RV area. That's gonna be a mess.
They have to be in the CAC, they have the CAC building.
There's a few people going there, dang, dang to me.
It was a little quiet to last year.
Back up here, but you just gotta.
Oh, yeah.
Worry about that.
Black statue. In the CAC building.
And normally, and we can't stay.
They was front and back. I went.
It was already set up for the Jamboree, I figured.
It will.
Enough of that, put flags.
I know they were.
We can do whatever, but we're not stalled.
We'll figure something out, I, I don't know, we need to do that right away though. Um, okay, is anything else, uh, means that you got? That sounds good.
I got, uh, y'all asked about the cemetery property. Um, I do have to sign a contract from the lady who oversees the trust, we just have to get that executed and filed and that'll be done. And, um, I spoke to the people about the crash vehicle as well, so she'll be good to go.
I can get another truck or get rid of that truck?
Whether or not you get another truck's gonna be up to the board here.
I'm saying legally, we can do whatever we want to that.
Well, I got a letter that, uh, was sent to Shelley for legislative auditor that said that the crash vehicle doesn't fall under surplus property or the movement correctly. So when I spoke to the adjuster earlier this week, she said that as long as we're fine with moving forward and signing the deed over to them, along with the original, um, amount that they sent.
Twenty-three thousand, twenty-three, whatever.
Yeah.
Twenty-three thousand, four thousand nine.
Yeah.
So we got that, we're gonna get that over.
Yeah, she sent me some paperwork to fill out, she sent it to me this afternoon, so I'm gonna check it tomorrow and we'll get it done as well. Other than that, I don't think there was anything y'all asked me to do.
Are they coming to get the truck? Is the truck theirs or is it ours?
Uh, well, we'll have to sign the deed to the truck over, so it's going to end up being theirs, they'll take it to salvage from there, do whatever they want.
I don't need to do nothing with it.
No, I wouldn't touch it right now and if they have any problems with the transfer of the vehicle, whatever, I'm sure they'll let us know.
We, several months ago, did we ever get everything straight on the land at the baseball field?
Yes, yeah, that's done.
Okay, does it?
Yes, that's already taken care of, it's all, it's now city property, it's filed.
On this, this was, one of our trucks was parked and some man, uh, it wasn't our fault at all, I mean, he just rammed into this, one of our trucks. And so it was a total loss, so that's what was about, it's his insurance company paying most of the money, but, uh.
They don't have to replace ours at all.
It's one of those things.
It was happening to be one of my good trucks on top of it.
Yeah.
So I gotta replace it.
Always something.
Yeah, there was. Was it your truck, Larry? No, Ronnie's.
Oh.
On the new Chevrolet.
Twenty-twenty, I think.
Yeah. It was one of the best ones I've ever.
And they got one.
He got it in the truck when it was hit, right? Yeah, he was, he was in the truck.
That's good.
Yeah, right, right.
You have no truck.
Now I can.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, Chance, that, that's all, sounds good. Um, next item is, uh, Chief's not here, but, uh, he's gonna have a recommendation for a pay step increase for Rodney, uh, Kyle, Chris Jones and Leon Thurgill Gill. I think he talked to you about it, lived in there.
And, and this would not be a step increase, uh, would not call, this, this is not a step increase, this is actually a market adjustment, which is different. And I put together, and he and I talked today about this and I said, well, where's the money gonna come from? And he said, Derek, I've got enough in there that I can pull out and so, and he's done well. I've been real pleased and I told him, I said, well, you've done great, I'll, I'll find him stuff. And, uh, it would, uh, I've got the numbers for him to look at before we present that, but I also have the, uh, what it is, it's like Leon was, was brought up when we did the, the change. In, uh, January of twenty-four, uh, he was actually put, set up as a great, a non-certified, uh, well, patrol officer, but he's not actually patrol. He's, he's, uh, resource officers, but he still falls under that area. Rodney and Chris both have three years behind them as detectives, which detective is different now. Regardless that Rodney and I has twenty-five years as a, as a, as a police officer in Spring Hill, so that's where his rate came from. It did not include anything to do with a detective and neither did Chris Jones', so that's what those are, they're market adjustments, they're not step increases. And, uh, it, it's, it's about ninety-five hundred dollars that he has to prove to the council that he can find.
Okay. Uh, the next item is that he has a recommendation that he send the resignation letters from Officers Trevor, Shessay.
Don't say that fast.
Someone, Sashery and, um, Cheyenne Gilling. And then, uh, the next item, he, uh, wants to hire, uh, Cadarius Jones and Jacob Sheen. So that'll be on their Monday night. And, uh, the only other thing that'll be on their Monday night is the tourism people decided they didn't want the building over here. And so we're gonna go back to what we originally thought and just put it up to surplus.
And rate just add to that, the reasons we talked about that, and it's not that the building's in bad shape, you actually have a copy. I don't know if you still have it, no, I've got a copy of the inspection, so that we can use that to our advantage when we bring that out for bid. Uh, which the building is solid, uh, but the city was made because we felt like that would end up pulling, uh, the chamber out of that building. So now you've got another building that's about half empty. And, uh, he did not want to move it here for some reason, I don't know why, but, uh, you know, he don't need, he's just a good man, but he just didn't. Uh, so that's why we, we backed off of that, we didn't wanna pull another building and, and, uh. Okay, what, you do have any?
We'll, we'll, that'll be on there to put the surplus. Did y'all have anything else today? All right then, thank y'all for coming.